Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Do you think it's going to work?
Okay.
I think it's ready.
Hey, Mayor.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for attending the city council meeting of March 7th, 2011. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Figueroa.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman Needham. Alderman Larson.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Well, present, we have a quorum. Could you please rise for the pledge of allegiance followed by the moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you, be seated. I do not have any comments prepared for this evening, but I have been advised by Treasurer John Schwab that he would like to speak very briefly for a moment regarding the most recent audit for the city of Waukegan. Treasurer Schwab.
Thank you, Mayor. In today's Waukegan New Sun was publishing the audit. That completes all the work. Everything is finalized on that. I've given copies to all the aldermen. If there's any questions, they can contact my office. I have a few other copies of that, and if anybody needed, if they wait till afterwards or come up here, I've got a few other copies. I'll be glad to give it out to the remaining ones to the audience. That's the ends of that audit, and we will begin again very shortly with the next years. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schwab. Now, we will go to audience time. First up is Joyce Evans.
Good evening. Joyce Evans, 829 McAllister, Waukegan, Illinois. When I was a little girl, even though I'm not a little girl anymore, when my dad did something good for me or bought me something, he had a little ball spot in the top of his head, and I would go sit on his lap and kiss him on the top of his ball head. Tonight, if I must say this to deputy, I mean to Chief Greathouse, he deserved that kiss on the top of his head. I really want to thank him personally tonight because it's a wonderful thing when you can go home and you don't have to return 15 to 20 calls for loud music. I really appreciate that for him restoring our city back with the loud music. Thank you, Chief Greathouse. Number two is, I want to know, do we have anything in store for curfew for this summer? The simple reason why, I'm out there, I see you got kids walking the street all times of night. I mean, little kids like nine, 10, 12. You know, once before, the plan that we had is that if you pick up a child after curfew time, you take them downtown to the city, you hold them there, when their parents get there, you sock it to their pocket. And after you get finished socking it to their pocket, the parents will get their kids home. Don't tell me they can't do it because it worked once before. And we need to get something that. Number three is, all these abandoned houses. You can drive down one street and you can see all these abandoned houses. I went to the courthouse, and I've got the addresses on some of them. One of them is next door to me, okay? The banks own these houses. People own them that don't live in the city. Just come by there, I beg you to come by there. It looked like a disaster area. These banks, you're talking about money? Hit these banks, because we shouldn't have to live in their garbage. It is terrible. And last night, I got home from church, I sit on my front yard, the abandoned house, here you saw four teenagers coming out of there. This is what they're doing. They're going to drugs, doing their business and everything. We need to get a top on this before the summer comes. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Next, we have Violet Ricker.
Good evening, aldermen and city council members. My name is Violet Ricker. I live at 10 North Sheridan Road. I'm the executive director of Waukegan Main Street, which is our downtown development nonprofit organization. I just want to tell you about a couple of events that we've got coming up. First of all, tomorrow night, in celebration for Mardi Gras, we're having a party at Jerry's Tacos at 120 North Genesee Street from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It's also Taco Tuesday, where Nettie makes tacos for a dollar, so we'd invite anybody to come join us and hear about some of the new shops and restaurants that'll be opening in downtown Waukegan. Additionally, there are flyers for both of these downstairs, if anybody would like to grab one on their way out. There's also information available at waukeganmainstreet.org. But this Friday, we have an event coming up called Art Walk, which is a tradition that we're continuing to showcase local artists in downtown Waukegan. This event will be taking place at the 100 South block of Genesee Street, and we'd ask people to check in at 116 South Genesee Street, which is Dinosaur Tattoo Studio and Art Gallery. They were having a grand opening for them at 6:00 PM, and also a grand opening for State Representative Rita Mayfield's office at 120 South Genesee Street at 5:00 PM. So we look forward to seeing all of our elected officials there to support two new businesses opening in downtown Waukegan, as well as several new other galleries. I'd also just like to thank everybody who showed up so far to see the opening production of Special Needs at Clockwise Theater, which is at 221 North Genesee Street. They have tickets available at clockwisetheater.org if anybody would like to check out the show there. It runs through the end of March. So thank you very much, and if you have any questions, you can talk to me afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Violet. For the record, her address is 10 North Sheridan in Waukegan. Next is Mr. Phil Carrigan, 1944 Ash in Waukegan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving my address and whatever. I don't have to do that. I want to talk about two things, parking and the library, the Waukegan Public Library. I wrote kind of a long letter to the New Sun that was published late last week, and it concerned both parking and the library. I want to acknowledge that my issue with parking as far as library patrons, Mayor Sabanjan called me early, late last week after a letter appeared in the paper, and gave me some detailed information about the city coming up with a validation protocol that will make patrons who use the library afforded two hours of parking, and people who don't use the library and try to scam on that, not eligible. So that is real pleasing. The only other thing about parking, some of you may remember that at the end of Genesee Street by Lake, there used to be non-meat at parking spots in front of former State Representative Eddie Washington's office and in front of the Waukegan Township. And the former State Representative Washington is no longer with us nor is his office, but there still are senior citizens who come to Waukegan Township for township services, and I noticed the signs have been completely, the meters have been reinstalled and the signs of free parking for people with business at those two places are gone. And I'd ask that that be considered. The other library issue is that we still have five full-time library staff whose positions will be eliminated based on budgetary restraints and other issues that were affected by and many other walks of life. I just believe in the library. It's important to people in the city of Waukegan, and particularly to individuals who, one, want to look online for jobs using the library personal computers, and children who have a wonderful experience when they go to the basement and see many books that they could take out and be excited by. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Next, we have Perry W. Foster, 2026 Kingston in Waukegan.
How you doing? I'm here tonight to talk about, again, the fees and things that you guys are looking at to increase, and I understand the reason why we have a budget we have to look at, but if we keep eating the meat, all we're going to have left is fat. And I think that we need to look at other options, as is I talked before. We have a lot of city employees that work in the city, but don't live in the city of Waukegan. Hold a fee or something to charge them, so that, think, why should they reap from benefits but not pay back into it? Second of all, I mean, we're here to honor a Waukegan's finest tonight, but yet we're still talking about laying some of them off. And we can't afford to lose any of our fire, police, even public workers. So I'm asking to relook at all the options. Don't cut just the meat. Let's look at some of the fat as well. All right? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Next, we have, I believe it's Joan Shrank, 2006 Melrose, Waukegan.
Good evening. Well, my name is Joan Shrank from 2006 Melrose Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois, and I am here representing Shrank Smoke &amp; Gun, a business which my husband Mike opened in Waukegan 46 years ago. I am here not only as a business owner, but also as a longtime resident. Like the council members, I am very concerned with the future and the well-being of our citizens here in Waukegan. And I want to address the issue of the gun sales ordinance as referred to in the Saturday issue of the New Sun. I am asking that this ordinance be tabled so that a meeting could be held with the Judiciary Committee, the Waukegan Police, Chief of Police, and the sporting firearms dealers here in Waukegan, so that a solution could be reached in this matter, which would meet the council's goals, as well as not impede our ability to remain competitive in the sporting firearms business here in Waukegan. I hope you give this some consideration, and I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Mr. Chris Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan.
Chris Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan, founding president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind and National Action Network of Lake County. I'm also here, you know, regarding the issue pertaining to the gun ordinance. And I just want to come and reiterate that we are not here to question anyone's right to own a firearm, to sell a firearm, to manufacture firearms, but what we are saying, that with every given right comes accountability and responsibility with that right. I live in the first ward, many be known as the South Side, and within our community there is a overabundance of handguns within our community that are unaccounted for. Young people are killing themselves. Don't get me wrong, we know that, we know that it's not the guns that kill people, but it's the people that shoot the guns. However, we do know that within our first ward, there is a high number of guns, and we have to do everything we can to make sure that we eliminate whatever effort or whatever problems that is causing the death and destruction of our young people. With this ordinance, I just want to say that what we're trying to do and what we want to accomplish here is just accountability. Okay? We don't, we're not trying to stop anybody from selling guns or owning guns, okay? That's all right. But like I said, with every right, there's a responsibility, and if there is an establishment or a, if there's an establishment that has been within our community for the number of years that a gun shop has been, surely there should have been some type of measure, there have to be some type of measures established to make sure stolen guns are not ended up in the first ward, in our community or any community. Okay? Stolen guns in any community or any guns, period, is bad for the community, it's bad for the gun owners and manufacturers. So all we want to do here is make sure that there is responsibility with those rights that come. Whatever you are going to propose here with this new ordinance, I have talked to Representative Mayfield, and I want, you know, they said, whatever you expect for yourself and your family, you should also want that for your neighbors. And what I'm proposing is whatever comes out of this and with the ordinance that has been amended, and I'm taking this to State Representative Mayfield and see if we can do something on a state level, because all we want to assure is that with guns that are being sold, that there is accountability where the guns end up at, who hands they are in, and where they come from. So that's pretty much all I have to say on that, and that we just want some accountability and to make sure, and I understand, I heard that it wasn't intentional, that the gun was stole, that a sold, that a stolen gun was sold. However, intentional or unintentional, it happened. That was only one that was caught, that we know of, that does not, that don't tell us about how many stolen guns that may have been stolen before, sold before that. Now, in closing, we have our Black History Beyond February program that is coming up. We just want to encourage the community to come out. That'll be at March the 25th at our BAM headquarters at 801 McAllister. We have a film showing 500 years later, and the following day of March the 26th on a Saturday, we will be at the Boys and Girls Club for the African Heritage Celebration, Music, Arts, Success Stories and more, and we have a poetic storyteller by the name of Oval William King. We encourage the community to come out and get involved. Any organization is only as good as those that get involved and support it. This is a free event, excuse me, a free event to the public. Thank you all for your time and your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Chuck Locke, 5531 Hilltop Lane.
Mr. Chuck Locke.
Late, I'm sorry.
I'm glad to see you, you lost the arm sling. I attended my first council meeting as residential development was being prepared, proposed off of River Road on two separate occasions. I was impressed at that time with the alderman's back gathering, their concern for the impact of the development it's going to have for our community, and the questions that they answered, asked the developers. Then I just participated in the Public Tax Forum in Voice and Opinion along with quite a few other residents of Waukegan. We agreed as an association that we're going to have to get involved with the people who are governing our quality of life. So I've been designated to represent the association that come to these meetings. I've attended every meeting since November, every Monday night meeting. I've also attended the Department of Public Works Committee meetings, as they're recommending activities for raising fees which will impact all of us in our community as well as in our subdivisions. Therein lies my issue. You, Mr. Mayor, have mandated fees be increased to make up for the $10 million deficit created by a flat tax vote by the council. The support for identifying how much increased fees will be, will be adding to the city or the impact of the residents is nonexistent in these meetings. Personal, rather, personnel don't have the accurate or the information that we need, and/or they're not in attendance. I, as a resident in the non-corporate part of Waukegan, do not feel that the information being provided to the council is adequate to make any of these arbitrary decisions. This is not in the best interest of the community. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our public comment. I just want to warn the audience that we'll be skipping around a little bit because of we have some legal folks with us this evening, and we don't want to keep people any longer than we have to. But, so just want to give you a warning, there will be two separate executive sessions tonight, one following some special events which are about to occur, then one at the end of the meeting before the alderman's public time. So just want to give you fair heads up on that. Now, item seven, Resolutions and Proclamations. I would like to invite our police chief, Dan Greathouse, to come to the front, please. He would like to address the audience.
Good evening. I'm Chief Dan Greathouse of the Waukegan Police Department. A year ago, a very tragic and senseless incident took place where a young man lost his life. My condolences go out to this young man's family, friends, and loved ones. As tragic as this incident was, we must recognize the heroic efforts of Officer Mike Donworth. Sir Donworth, can you come forward, please? On March 4th, 2010, Officer Donworth was dispatched to a call of shots fired in the area of Ethan Jackson. The call was basically a gunman was shooting at residents in the area. As Officer Donworth pulled into the area, he turned down an alley and was confronted with an armed gunman. He ordered the gunman to drop his weapon. The gunman then fired upon him. Officer Donworth returned the fire, and he neutralized the threat. Officer Donworth risked his life, gave his all. Officer Donworth put himself in harm's way to protect others, and for that, I proudly would like to present him with the Waukegan Police Department Medal of Valor.
I guess I always got some words. I'm thankful to be here, and I just want to thank everybody for coming. This was a great night. I'd like to introduce my mom, Lee Donworth, back there. I got my wife Claire, and my sons, James and his girlfriend Bree, and Thomas and his girlfriend Stephanie, Jim Simmons from the Illinois State Police, State Lodge, second Vice President, Paul and Tammy are neighbors and friends, and my scoutmaster, Keith Toch. And anybody else, I missed them, sorry if I missed you. But thank you very much.
I'd like to say, Mike, it was a privilege working with you on the police department for 27 years. I found you a man of honor and distinction, and I drafted this for you because of our 35 years of friendship. Resolution 11038, whereas Patrolman Michael Donworth on March 4th, 2010 responded to a report of a subject firing a handgun at passing motors in the area of 8th Street and Jackson Street, and whereas Patrolman Michael Donworth, upon arriving to the scene, began a methodical search of the area for the offender, and whereas Patrolman Michael Donworth, while in the alley of this area, was confronted by an armed subject who, upon observing Patrolman Donworth, raised his weapon and discharged it repeatedly at Michael Donworth, and whereas Patrolman Michael Donworth chose to place his safety in jeopardy and displaying the utmost courage and determination stood his ground and returned fire at the offender, neutralizing the offender, and whereas Patrolman Michael Donworth's action on this date undoubtedly not only saved his life, but protected the lives of residents of the area, and whereas Michael Donworth's display of heroism and bravery in the light of duty will serve as a shining example to his dedication and commitment to the Waukegan Police Department, the city of Waukegan, and the citizens of our community, and whereas Michael Donworth, by distinguishing himself, distinguishing himself, has brought honor and credit to his family, his police department, his city, and himself. Now therefore be resolved that Mayor Sabanjan, members of Waukegan Illinois City Council hereby recognize Patrolman Michael Donworth's strength of character, his steadfast commitment to preserving the lives of residents of our community, and his exceptional courage under extremely difficult circumstances. It is with great pride that they acknowledge his receipt of this, of the Waukegan Police Department's highest honor, the Medal of Valor. Further be resolved that a subliminal copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to Michael Donworth dated the 7th day of March 2011.
Thank you, Mike. Next up, I'd like to invite Fire Chief Dan Young to please come forward. We have more of our hardworking and brave public servants to acknowledge this evening. Chief Young.
Good evening, council members, mayor, citizens. It's proud, it's a proud moment. I just received word that seven firefighters from the city of Waukegan are up for the same type of an award that Officer Donworth received. Could I have firefighter, paramedic, Tim McGrane, if you're here, step forward? Firefighter, paramedic, Troy Lynch, step forward, please. Lieutenant Doug Camarado, step forward, as well as firefighter Jacob Mount, Lieutenant Tom Christensen, and firefighter Michael Bath. Now, just to explain, we are not going to give out any medals this evening. On May 12th, these fine gentlemen and firefighters, your firefighters, will be receiving the Awards of Excellence, as well as the Medal of Valor, in some cases, for two calls that they responded to during our last year. The first, I'd like to take and let you know what the firefighter excellence awards, which firefighter McGrane, Lynch, and Lieutenant Camarado will receive, and the explanation is, is that the firefighter excellence award is awarded for the act of service in the line of duty demonstrating excellence and professionalism to service the citizens of the city of Waukegan as well as the state of Illinois. For firefighter Jacob Mount, Lieutenant Tom Christensen, and firefighter Michael Bath, they will receive the Medal of Valor Award. The Medal of Valor Award is given by the state of Illinois to a firefighter for an act of heroism or bravery that clearly demonstrates courage and dedication in the face of danger while in the performance of duty. Now, just to remind you, you may have, you may remember that back in May, on May 4th, as a matter of fact, on Bluff Street, we responded to a structured fire, and upon our initial arrival, we were met with a woman screaming that her baby was inside. At that time, Lieutenant Doug Camarado and Troy Lynch made entry into that building and came upon a door that was padlocked. When somebody says that their baby is inside, they start looking very seriously and very quickly. This baby turned out to be a 21-year-old that was locked inside. They took, got him out, and that man is alive. The other three gentlemen up here, as well as firefighter Bob Callahan, who is separated from our service, receives their awards for the following. They received a call. Two infants, no, not infants, two children, ages seven and eight, were trapped inside of a building, and our dispatchers, and our dispatcher should have awards for this, too, could hear the children screaming inside that building. And these gentlemen took, arrived, entered that building, and with the fire still going, did a search in the upstairs. And as a matter of fact, could Lieutenant Christensen step forward, please? Just step forward. I'd like you to know, please. Jacob Mount and Michael Bath, as well as Tim McGrane, he receives a firefighter excellence award because he did his job as making sure that there was water flowing through the hoses. But those three gentlemen, while the fire was going, went to the second floor and took and extricated two- and extricated two children from that building, initiated CPR, had them flown out of our city by air ambulance, and those two children have those three gentlemen to thank because they are alive and well and back to school. So, I wish to congratulate them. Again, we will discuss this a little bit more in May after they go down for their awards. Just so you know, that this was given to them by the Medal of Honor Foundation, which is solely funded by the sale of the firefighter license plates that these gentlemen pay a little bit more to the state to have on their vehicle. But it's done by their peer and the state fire marshal, as well as governor. And I am sure that I can speak for the city council, the mayor, and myself. I am proud of you, and congratulations on your awards.
I'm sure that they probably got a few goosebumps because these are guys who don't view themselves as heroes in the egotistical sense. They're just hard workers, and we appreciate them, every one of them. So, thanks very much. Now, what we need to do is, we're going to, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, excuse me. Yeah, I jumped over the minutes to get to our resolution. So, I'll take a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Larson, to accept the minutes of February 22nd, 2011, the regular meeting and executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Now, we'll get down to moving some things around. I should explain, we had one other item on the agenda today, which was a birthday resolution for Theodore Trombino, but unfortunately, she was not able to make it tonight, so we will have this award in two weeks. Hopefully, she'll be ready and capable to attend the meeting then. But at age 100, I'm sure we all understand that you have to be careful, and you're a little more fragile, so we want to make sure she's ready to come. But we're looking forward to having her come to visit us. Okay, now, if I could, what I'd like to do is, item 11, under ordinances and resolutions, I would like to take a motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Larson, to move that up the agenda so that we can address the business contained therein, then allow the gentleman who is here to address this issue to go ahead and go. And as I said, we will have another executive session right before Alderman's time that will probably be a little bit lengthy. I just want to warn you in advance because we have several major topics to discuss, so it may be 20 minutes to a half an hour after we go out in executive session, then the Alderman will come back in and make their comments. Or we could do the comments before, and that way, in essence, the meeting would be finished. So, why don't we do that? We'll have the Alderman's comments first. So, what I'll do is, we have a motion to move up item 11.
That's a roll call. That's a roll.
11 is moving up under ordinances and resolutions. Yeah, all those in favor to move item 11 up on the agenda, say, to right below, or I'm sorry, right above committee reports and motions. So, we'll go for item 7. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Who is speaking to this? Mr. Keller, if you'd like to come forward?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Paul Keller. I'm an attorney with the firm of Anselk Link. We are a special counsel to the city of Waukegan. And what we have before you this evening is an ordinance proposing a redevelopment plan and project, this is a long title, redevelopment plan and project four, and the designation of the Sunset/Delaney Industrial Park Conservation Area, and the adoption of tax increment financing therefore, and convening a joint review board and calling a public hearing in connection therewith. This is the first, this ordinance is the first legislative step in the process of creating a new TIF district. I don't think I need to tell you what TIF districts are, but if we need any discussion about that, I'll be happy to go into some of the details. The process requires a public hearing and a meeting of what's called the Joint Review Board. And this is the ordinance that calls for that public hearing. It is to take place on May 9th, 2011, at 7:00 PM here in City Hall. And the Joint Review Board is scheduled to take place, by this ordinance, on March 24th at 10:00 AM. You have already been presented with the redevelopment plan and project, which was put together by your TIF consultant, the firm of Duff and Phelps. This is the redevelopment plan and project for the Delaney/Sunset Industrial Park Conservation Area, and it centers on a project that is being proposed by the Woodland Foods Company, and involves the area of Sunset between, Sunset Road between Delaney Road and Green Bay Road. The creation of the TIF district will allow for tax increment financing. And the next step, after the public hearings take place and the joint review board takes place, meeting takes place, the next step that will affect, that'll come before you will be the presentation of three ordinances, all to be enacted at the same meeting, which will approve the redevelopment plan and project, which will designate this area as a TIF district, and which will adopt tax increment financing for the purpose of creating revenue for this project. At the same time, we will be developing a redevelopment agreement with the developer, which presumably will involve some subsidies that will come, the revenues of which will come from the TIF revenue to be developed, be generated by this TIF district. That and the thumbnail sketch is what this ordinance is about, and if you have specific questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Do we have any questions? Alderman Tempest.
Thank you. How long do you want the TIF to run?
TIF will run, by statute, the life of the TIF is set at 23 years. It can be shortened by action of the city council.
Do you feel we need 23 years of the TIF to get this economic development underway?
I can't answer that question. That will be a matter of what sort of economic and financial assistance the developer feels is necessary, and the revenues that the TIF consultant expects that the TIF district can generate.
The TIF district, we're freezing the actual taxes that the schools are going to be getting at this point at the assessed valuation?
That's, yeah.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, you want to do that for 20-some years?
That's the statutory period.
I know what the statutory is, but what does this organization want? How long of a TIF do they want? Are they going for the max 20-some years?
We haven't gotten into those discussions with the developer yet.
Well, I think we need to. I really think 20-some years is a long, long time. I'll be dead, buried by then.
We'll.
I mean, I'm 76 now, 96.
I doubt it.
If I make it to 100, I might, I'm hungry enough. But, you know, we start talking, it's only 20-some years. 20-some years, hell, I paid my house off in 15. You're businessmen, you're asking us to extend a TIF to 20-some years. That's a long commitment.
Alderman, I'm not the businessman, the developer, I'm your lawyer.
But you're the messenger.
I'm the messenger, okay. Yes.
I made my point, Your Honor.
Your Honor.
I think 22 years is a long, long time. I could not vote for that long a TIF.
Just as a point, Alderman Tempest, this is not in Waukegan District 60.
It's still, we, now, wait a minute. School gurney, I understand that. It's still education.
Right.
And our tax rate also would be frozen. And everybody's tax rate would be frozen. And the money that they gain goes back into their development. And I think we need to look very closely and see if we're going to get our dollars back in the development. I think we have to look at that very closely. Because everybody wants a TIF, everybody wants a free lunch, and there isn't any more free lunches. That's my concern, but a small.
Alderman Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. This development is primarily in the 8th Ward, if not entirely in the 8th Ward. We are capturing hundreds of jobs from another community through this act, filling a building that has been mostly vacant for a decade, and offers the opportunity for similar industrial development in other areas along Sunset and Delaney. It's a win-win for the city and the businesses looking to do business in the city. And on top of that, the school district is fully aware of the TIF and has no objections to it, understanding the economic necessities that a TIF presents to the opportunities to keep jobs in Waukegan or attain jobs. And the back end of the deal should be favorable to all concerned. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Alderman. Just so the audience understands, this is not the first TIF district in the city of Waukegan. The city has been creating TIF districts for decades. This is a common economic development tool that is used all across the nation. It's just not Illinois, it's just not Waukegan. So, I don't want people here to come away with the mistaken idea that we're just doing this for the first time. This is a normal, accepted practice. The Alderman is correct, it does withhold some revenues from certain other governing bodies, but that money is supposed to go back into the business to help defray the cost of their improvements or development. And to be honest with you, I have yet to sit in an economic development meeting except for one, and where somebody didn't have their hand out for some form of a tax break, some form of a special district, that's standard practice. And if we're going to compete with the communities surrounding Waukegan, we have to compete on equal footing, and we have to use the same tools. So, that's why we are working to move this forward. We are reviewing all the TIF districts in Waukegan. We are preparing to close out a number of them. We may create some new ones, depending on what the need is, and expand and contract as well. So, it's something that, if we want to bring new business, and I hear it all the time, why don't we get this, why don't we get a coal? Why don't we get this? Why don't we get that? Well, you have to have a pretty good-sized worm on the hook to catch these big fish. And that's what we're doing. So, just so everybody understands, this is not something that is a first time for the city of Waukegan. So...
Your Honor?
Yes, Alderman Cunningham.
I think one thing does need to be clear. We're not giving monies from a pocket of money sitting in a bank.
Right.
And giving it to the, that's not how it works. And maybe, so there's, maybe Tina could kind of clear that up. This is not money in hand that we give to someone to do that, so, or, Mary, you can do it however you want to do it, so it's a better understanding for the public, and I'm glad you addressed that to the public.
This comes out of the tax base. It's just as simple as that. We're not using money that we have in the bank because we don't have any money in the bank, so we can't, don't have anything to use. So, we're using what we do have available. And as I said, this is not anything new. Mr. Keller, if you have anything to this you'd like to add in regards to how they're structured, but I think it's a fairly straightforward proposal?
Yeah, this is a little different from the TIF districts that you have previously created. This is specifically an industrial park conservation area. It is for the purpose of creating revenues to support the pulling in of new businesses that would go into an industrial park with jobs. And so, it works a little bit differently than the other TIF districts that you may have been familiar with with regard to commercial development and retail development. This is specifically an industrial park TIF district. And just to emphasize something you mentioned a moment ago, Mayor, we are in the process right now of shutting down TIFs 2 and 3 early, earlier than the 23 years that they were originally scheduled to run because they've served their purpose, and we don't need to keep them operating anymore. And there will be millions, several millions of dollars worth of surplus that will be turned back to the various taxing bodies as soon as these TIF districts are shut down.
Great, thank you, Mr. Keller. And just in case anybody in the audience is curious or any of the council members, this is made possible under the Industrial Jobs Recovery Act that the state of Illinois adopted. And it does provide communities with the authority to create TIF districts in order to attract, help expand, or start new industrial-related businesses. So, it is something that, as I said, is something that's common statewide. It's a little bit different than what we've done in the past where Cub Foods and other stores got TIFs because they were retail-oriented operations. This is an industrial. So, Alderman Tempest.
Yes, a TIF does not have to be 22, 23 years old.
No.
No.
And we can negotiate that.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Absolutely, that is up for us to handle. All right, thank you very much. We will say no further questions. We will take a motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Larson. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Figaroa.
Aye, and I want to thank the corporation and Mr. Keller. The corporation represents the considering Waukegan and adventure. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest. I'll vote aye to go forward in negotiation. Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Keller. I think we're all set for the evening. If you'd like to go ahead and head on out. Now, we need to go into executive session to cover the item, topic of union negotiations. We'll take a motion by Alderman Moizio, seconded by Alderman Rivera, to go into executive session.
Your Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Tempest.
There's a number of people here are concerned about the gun transfer ordinance. Could we possibly move that up on the agenda? So, I think that's why they're here, the main body of people.
If you'd like to make that motion?
If I could, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Moizio, to move item, let me find it here, a second.
Item F.
Item F, approve amendment to gun transfer ordinance. Hold on a moment, please. I'm sorry. No, okay. To move that up the agenda to follow the item which we just finished, which is item 11. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So, that is coming out of Judiciary Committee. Alderman Figaroa, please.
Your Honor, I'd like to send it back to committee if I could.
A motion by Tom, I'll second that.
We have a motion by Alderman Conkin, seconded by the Chair, Alderman Figaroa, to return to committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Might also explain that in the last week, the state of Illinois, through its agricultural committee, has brought out six legislative items that actually will impact what we're trying to accomplish here. So, we need to analyze what those items are, what the language is in them relative to what we're doing. It may be that the best course of action is to sit tight for a little bit and wait until the state moves theirs forward and we see where they're going. Every one of their, every single one of the Every one of their, every single one of the items coming out of the Ag Committee basically circumvents every municipality's ability to govern guns. So, we will look and see how that is done.
Your Honor?
Yes, so Alderman Cunningham, and then Alderman Moisio, oh, Alderman Moisio, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that Mrs. Schrank and Mr. Blanks are both right. We just gotta make sure we get it right. Both of their comments were, were right. We just wanna make sure that we have it right. That's all.
Okay, good, thank you. Alderman Conken.
Your Honor, I'd also like to make a comment. I can understand the need for an ordinance that is necessary, but if this is, had been a common occurrence, I could understand us rewriting an ordinance. But from my understanding, this is not something that happens every day. Uh, this is not something that we have to have a knee-jerk response to and write an ordinance, because if it happens again in a month, are we gonna write it again? I think we should look at it a little bit closer and determine whether this actually needs to be done.
Okay, thank you. We provide you with, you know, the information and the ordinances, and you vote on them. So, it's, it's a decision to be made by the city council as to whether or not this is adopted or not. So, we will just have to wait and see where it goes. Uh, so, we have the two motions to go into executive session. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. I, I'm assuming about fifteen to twenty minutes for this executive session. Feel free to mingle and talk. Take a motion to go back into regular session, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Wayne. Motion to go back into regular session by Alderman Moisio and Alderman Newsom. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, we're back in regular session.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moisio.
Here.
Alderman Figueroa.
Here.
Alderman Newsom.
Here.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman Larson.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
He's coming.
Alderman Conken.
Right behind him.
Present.
Present. One second. Present. Here.
Alderman Tempest is present.
Okay.
Okay, we're here.
Good, we have a quorum. Uh, we need to move one more item of business up under, under item ten, under new business recommended actions by corporation counsel. Item C, authorize an expenditure of up to, of twenty-five thousand dollars for a letter of credit for Yeoman Creek. I'd like to be able to move that up and take a motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Tempest. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Okay, we will take that item out of order. Brunt, if you would like to come up and explain what is going on with Yeoman Creek.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. Thanks for having me. I'm Brent Denzen, I'm attorney at Anselk Link, and we're special counsel to the city on certain environmental matters, one of which is the Yeoman Creek landfill superfund site. Uh, today specifically, we're authorizing a letter of credit that is required under federal law as a financial assurance that we're gonna be able to meet our long-term projected costs at the superfund site. Uh, so, at all times, everyone who's a party to the superfund cleanup, we're one of them. There's a school district, numerous private corporations have to maintain federal, uh, financial assurance so the EPA knows that we'll be able to pay for our yearly costs that come through. Uh, the letter of credits is for two-point-five million dollars. It's a, it's a long, you know, this is a thirty-year project, so, with superfund sites, depending on how much familiarity you have, these are large, long-term cleanups. And, uh, so, this is not something, this is a cost that's gonna be over, over years, and the letter of credit is not costing the city that amount, but it is twenty-five thousand to have the letter of credit. So, this is something we discussed earlier, we went out for bids, we got the lowest bid, it's been drafted, reviewed by EPA, approved, and, uh, every other member of the group has a letter of credit as well. And we're hoping that this letter of credit's gonna be a temporary measure so that we can regain our status as a local government, under the local government test, and EPA will allow us to not have a letter of credit anymore. But currently, they're requiring us to have one. So, um, I guess, if you have questions, I wanna remind the council and the mayor, if you have questions about not just this, but anything with Yeoman Creek, to give our office a call, and we'll be more than happy to explain anything that's going on. But tonight, we can specifically focus on this, and I'll answer any questions.
Alderman Moisio.
When they want letter of insurances for financials, who would we end up paying? The federal government, the EPA? Would we end up paying them?
That's right.
Now, that was a question that I want the public to understand. So, we gotta have money to pay the federal government. What sense does that make to anybody out in the public? One arm of government has to have money to pay another arm of government. We all get taxed by the same people. Why do we have to have, you talk about playing the shell game with the public. My God. The federal government taxes all of us, don't they? The state government taxes all of us, and, and, and the city taxes you. But then, we gotta have money in case the federal government needs it, or for whatever reason, and we wonder why we're in the condition we're in. That makes no sense at all to me, that the federal government requires us to have money to maybe have to pay the EPA. The EPA is a tax, is a tax-supported agent of the government, and we gotta have money to pay them. That makes, you'd wonder why we're in the condition we're in this country. Because they're playing the shell game with all of us out there. On all this, on all this environmental remediation, it's just a shell game. And the only people that get hurt are the taxpayers. It's ridiculous.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Uh, who's, yes, Treasurer Schwab.
If I can explain a little bit. Uh, the reason we have a letter of credit and the negotiated interest, I've got the lowest rate of interest we can possibly pay if we ever have to, to call upon it. So, the letter of credit is only an amount that says that if the city defaults on a payment, we make two payments each year to the Roman Creek Group, you approve them, okay? So, if we default on that, this will back up that amount of money. So, then, the full amount of money is just, is a guarantee. So, we pay, we're gonna have to pay twenty-five thousand dollars a year to guarantee that that money would be there in case we default. Now, we have not defaulted on any payment, et cetera. But the rules, let me finish, sir, and then I'll try to answer any question. We have, in two of any five years, if you have spent more than five percent more than you brought in, we are in default. Because that's the situation, that we have overspent in more than two years out of five, we are required federally, under the agreement of the Yeoman Creek, to provide a letter of credit. Now, it's gonna cost us that amount of money until we can have five years, it appears, five years, okay, that our budget is, is balanced. And then, we will no longer be required. So, that's the situation. We're not paying the federal government anyway. The twenty-five thousand dollars a year will be paid to First Midwest Bank, because they have to set aside that money, they cannot loan it to somebody else. It has to be available to us every day, even though we have never defaulted on any of the payments to Yeoman Creek. Any other questions, sir?
Who do we make those payments twice a year to?
To the Yeoman Creek remediation group.
What?
I have a question. What if we tell them we ain't gonna pay it?
Yeah.
What are they gonna do to us?
Um, attorney, what are, what are they gonna do?
If, if we don't pay, we're in violation of federal law, and the federal.
We're in violation of federal law, they're in violation of federal law many times. They don't enforce what the schools do.
I mean, essentially, to answer your question, what would happen is the US government would, would come after the city, and they could take any action that they have under the law against us. The situation we're in right now is because the federal government came after the city in nineteen ninety-eight under the superfund law. And, uh, so, we have a long-term, we have an agreement with ourselves, the school district, there's Goodyear is involved, Dexter Corporation, to clean up the site over thirty years. Uh, if we don't maintain our financial assurances, the group members can sue us under breach of contract, and the federal government can go after us.
They can have it.
No, they can't, no, we're not gonna get involved.
They can have Yeoman Creek.
It doesn't make any sense to get involved in a fight over this and get drawn into what would be twenty-five thousand, suddenly it becomes a hundred-and-fifty thousand and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and we're in the middle of a battle that we don't need. Now, the city of Waukegan acquired this property, if I remember correctly, along with the Waukegan Park District, the school district, and other, into, other groups. We did not do our due diligence. They, I don't know why, I was, had nothing to do with me, but I will tell you that lessons from this sort of acquisition have been hard-learned, they're expensive. We will never take another piece of property, acquire another piece of property, be given another piece of property unless all due diligence is done, and all the testing, whether it's phase one, phase two, whatever the testing is done, to make sure that we are acquiring a clean piece of property, or we know who's responsible for the pollution. This is, this is, you're not gonna run away from it. You can't do it. There's no getting away from it. There's no reason to get into a, I'm not gonna say what the word, a fighting match with the, the federal government over this issue, because it'll just end up costing us more, our partners will come after us, it's just not worth it. The city made a mistake, and we're paying for it to this day. It's one of many mistakes that have been made over the years that we're gonna continue to pay for, so that's just the way it is. There's no getting out from underneath it. There really isn't. Alderman Moisio.
I understand all that, I was, I was sort of being facetious, but.
Well, I just wanna make sure everybody understood.
Right. I was being, I mean, but I, to me, it's just a total boondoggle of, of, of the citizens. By every, by, by, it's just a total boondoggle. The only person making money is the bank, which we bailed out, maybe not that specific bank, but the banks are making money on the interest in lawyers. That's it. The taxpayer's not making any money. They're getting taken to the bank by the federal government and by the, because we have to pay for it. I just don't understand. If you're all working together, the federal government, the state, and the municipality, something like this would not happen. But I don't wanna take any more time.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, it is what it is. We have it before us this evening. I would like to take a motion by Alderman Figueroa, seconded by Alderman Cunningham, to authorize the expenditure up to twenty-five thousand dollars for a letter of credit for Yeoman Creek. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye, only because I got a gun in my head.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye, there's no alternative, I guess.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you, gentlemen and lady. Uh, thank you, Brunt.
Thank you.
We're all set, appreciate your being here this evening.
If there's any other questions on Yeoman Creek, please feel free to ask. Uh, there's a, it's, the seventy-acre site has, we have a long end-use goal for it that will be, I'll be back in front of you soon to discuss, but hopefully, there's a happy ending to all this, but thanks for having me.
Great, thank you. And, and I think people in the audience should know, and those watching on television, this is because work has been ongoing on this site for years, and there's a cost to it. And the cost is borne by the property owners, in this case, because of the fact that certain steps were not taken when the property was acquired. So, it is, it is not just for ownership, they're actually, remediation has been ongoing for a number of years. So, that's part of what we're dealing with here. All right, great. So, now, we will finally kinda move back to some normalcy on the agenda here a little bit, and under committee reports and motions, we have Judiciary Committee, Alderman Figueroa.
Your Honor, I was absent last Monday, I'm gonna allow, I'm gonna ask Alderman Cunningham to go ahead, and he chaired the meeting, to go ahead and run through those, those motions, if you would be so kind.
Thank you. Alderman Cunningham.
Judiciary Committee, uh, committee report with item A, corporation counsel, uh, corporation counsel drafting ordinance to approve landmark calendar AL dash two dash ten, located six-fourteen North Genesee Street, landmarking of the Beto, Beto Com residence. The Judiciary Committee approved and I so moved to draft an ordinance to approve the landmark calendar for the six-fourteen North Genesee Street, a landmarking of the Beto Com residence.
We have the motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Figueroa. Seeing as how this is just a request to draft, voice vote is sufficient, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, thank you.
Item B, corporation counsel to draft an ordinance to approve zoning calendar twenty-three-thirty-five, located in nine-nineteen Eighth Street, uh, for the conditional use permit for an educational outreach center. Judiciary Committee approve and I so move to draft an ordinance for conditional use permit for nine-nineteen Eighth Street.
We have the motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Figueroa. Again, it is a request to draft, so a voice vote is sufficient, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, thank you.
Item C, corporation counsel drafting ordinance to approve zoning calendar twenty-three-thirty-six, located at six-ninety-nine Lakers Road, for the conditional use permit for an outdoor paintball and baseball training facility.
Indoor.
I'm sorry, indoor, indoor. Uh, the Judiciary Committee approve and I so move to draft the conditional use permit for six, six-ninety-nine Lakers Road, for conditional use permit indoor paintball and baseball training facility.
We have the motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Figueroa. Again, it is a request to draft, voice vote is sufficient, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, thank you.
Item D, corporation counsel drafting ordinance to approve amendments to section twenty-one, Article Four, City Code regarding jaywalking. Judiciary Committee approve, approve and I so move to, we draft an ordinance to revise, I think, is this revise? To draft an ordinance to approve, to amend, to amend the ordinance to approve, uh, the jaywalking, for jaywalking.
Uh, Alderman, unfortunately, the way this is presented on tonight's agenda, it's actually a request to draft, whereas that draft was done, unfortunately, it, the language on the agenda is, is not accurate for an action item tonight, so what we'd like to do is hold it over. And bring it back to you for the next meeting as an action item. So, Alderman Cunningham, if you would so request.
Item D is held over, on request of the mayor. Item E, we don't need, this held over, right? We don't need anything.
Yes, that's correct.
Item E, approve as presented the agreement between Red Speed Illinois LLC for automated traffic law enforcement system. The Judiciary Committee approve and I so move to approve as presented the agreement between Red Speed Illinois LLC.
We have the motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Figueroa. This is a roll call item, so roll call, please.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
Item F has been held in committee. Item G, approve action plan of CDBG funded code enforcement. The Judiciary, the Judiciary Committee approve and I so move to approve the action plans through CD, CDBG funded code enforcement. And I think there was some, let's get it on the floor and I can make my comments.
We have the motion by Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Figueroa. Comments, please.
With this, I thought they did a great and excellent job of this. I think it's really identifying our code enforcement. I think there's two code enforcement officers who are paid through the CDBG grant. Now, what they've done is kind of reorganized exactly where those code enforcement officers can actually do their job. I think they did an excellent, a fantastic job of identifying various spots throughout our city where we can utilize, you know, these resources throughout the city of Waukegan without being penalized by the federal government, unless you wanna get into a fight with that. So, other than that, that's it, your honor. Ready for your call?
All right. I just wanna add to that, that this is growing out of a project that actually started well over a year ago. I had asked then Chief Yancey and now Chief Greathouse to help to identify in the city of Waukegan what I call the foot-on-fire effect of having areas that are neighborhood and that are in dire condition as far as the buildings, the quality of life, the crime, and so we began drawing areas of the city of Waukegan in boxes that we would deal with, and this kind of came out of that in regards to applying code officers to specific trouble areas, to really put pressure on those areas and the landlords and every property owners to clean up, to make these neighborhoods safe, and to return some quality of life to the people that live in these designated areas. And we'll share a little bit more with you as we go along and share with you what these areas are, and we'll report back on our efforts as we go through them, through the spring, summer, fall. This will take, this won't happen overnight. This will take time. This is several years' worth of work, but it's something that can be done. So we have the motion. This is a roll call item, so roll call, please.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
The eyes have it. Thank you. Next up is Alderman Rivera with his Public Works Committee report.
Your honor, we had a special committee meeting today at five o'clock. It was called, but because of lack of quorum, we were not able to have the Public Works Committee.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. And so as a result of that, none of the items that are on the agenda are ready to be acted upon.
That's correct.
Hopefully, the committee will convene between now and the next city council meeting, get these items through the committee and out and available for vote by the general city council. Thank you, Alderman Rivera. Do you have any other comments you'd like to add?
Well, the only thing I could recommend that, I know there's some questions still, and I would recommend that if the Aldermen have any questions, not only to talk to the department heads, but to also talk with our finance committee as well if there's any other questions in regards to their concerns.
Yes, Alderman Moisio.
There's, I get a little confused here, but so help me out. I might need Corporation Council, but the one, there's thirteen sections, or some of them, I'm, some of them I'm ready to vote on, some of them, what, can we pull, do we have to bunch them all in the one ordinance? Can they be taken, I don't, maybe Alderman Rivera can answer my question.
If I can answer that, your honor, it can't be done that way. It has to be done as the ordinance, as the water sewer ordinance. It can't be done, you know, per section.
Sure, why can't you do per section? We could get some of this done and over with instead of having one thing hold up seventeen things. I don't know.
We may have to refer that to Corporation Council then.
Corporation Council maybe can help me, I don't know.
Well, I just ask sidebar with Corporation Council, what you have to do is you would have to amend the ordinance to reduce it to less those items that you wish to vote on. So therefore then, it becomes a little bit confusing then to add those other items as another ordinance which has to be rewritten, which takes staff time, which takes our legal people's time, and they have spent quite a bit of time on this already. I don't really want to, to be honest with you, staff just doesn't have the time to go back and do it over again, and we don't wanna pay legal to rewrite and restructure. It's ready to go.
Okay.
And we really need to somehow or other get to this. So Alderman Rivera, I'm sure, absolutely confident, will call his committee together and do his best to address the issue at hand.
I will do my best, but again, my recommendation is if the Aldermen have any questions, to speak to the department head, to speak to the finance department head if there's any questions in regards to some numbers that they wanna see.
Okay, well, and I might ask too that you may also even acquire of the chair of the committee as well, so Alderman Conken, please.
I'm with Alderman Moisio also. I thought that we were ready to go with the water and sewage fees. I thought that one was ready to go, good to go.
I can address that.
Why not? We had the meeting last week and we had that, we went through it and voted on it. My understanding was that the changes to the fees that were in there, that were approved, were approved, and the ones we didn't change at all stayed the same, and so it was ready to go. I don't, so I guess I'm not understanding why we're not on, why that didn't come out of committee from last week, Monday.
Can't answer that. Let's ask the chairman.
Again, there was a couple of sections in there that we didn't agree on, so, and again, you can't bring it out per section. It has to be brought out per ordinance, so until we address, until we address those certain sections, which was the fees, the water fees, you know, until we agree on that.
I got you.
I thought we agreed that.
No, we didn't. We agreed on a lot of other, we agreed, we agreed on most of the sections of that ordinance, but again, we can't bring it out of committee until we vote on every, you know, section as, as an ordinance.
Okay, all right, Alderman Conken. Alderman Cunningham, I saw you reach for your microphone.
Well, I guess I wanna go to Alderman Conken's point. It sounds like the committee, and I was not at the committee meeting, we were at a, but a history program, so that's the reason why we weren't there, now that we're keeping tallies of us. But something that struck me about what Alderman Conken said, if we agreed on certain aspects of the total ordinance and the other parts of the ordinance, it appears that there was an agreement to leave them as-is, then we can move on with those, with this particular ordinance, unless you don't, you do not wanna move on because you still need the, you're looking for an increase. It looks like there was an agreed-upon number for, with the sewage, the water and sewage, correct? There was, so if there were no other, if there were no other discussion about the other fees, then they are to stay the same.
We, there was, Alderman Rivera said there was seventeen. I remember, I don't know, thirteen or fourteen or whatever it was, and we were, we were agreeing on, excuse me, I think all of them, but maybe one or two, correct? Alderman Rivera?
Yeah, the one that we didn't agree on was the water.
The gallon usage rates? That was the one that, the fee for the.
The gallon usage rate.
Whether it was gallon, ten thousand gallons, seven thousand gallons, a special rate.
Especially the fee which was being offered at sixty, what was it, for the, there were some fees in there that we didn't agree on going up one-hundred percent.
Well, then leave them alone.
So.
If we don't agree, then leave them alone.
Well, I called the meeting for today, and I'm not gonna reiterate that again. I called the meeting for today at five o'clock. If this is what you're telling me now, then you should've been here at five o'clock to say yes or no.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Let's move on.
It's as simple as that.
Public Works Committee has no action items. We will go now to old business. Item A, which was a motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest to accept a bid from Total Solutions not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for four parking-paying machines. Given the fact that Alderman Needham is not present today, what is your sense of this then?
You know, I've heard some letters and some comments, emails. One was, I was gonna ask my parking man, city clerk, about our meters only go for hour and a half?
Yes.
That seems strange to me. I guess I don't park down there. I would think a two-hour parking meter would surely be better, if you're going in for lunch somewhere. You mean down by Greentown, they're only an hour and a half?
Yes, sir. During the comprehensive parking study we did, Desmond Associates did that parking study, it was recommended that we limit those to an hour and a half, and it's more practical to do that because what we're trying to do down there is move the cars into the parking garages rather than on the street.
Well, Greentown, there is no parking garage.
I know, but sir, the reason they did that parking, limited parking was to move the majority of the cars into the parking garage. That's why they did it.
I'll repeat, Greentown, there is no parking garage, so that sure don't make sense down there.
And I agree with you.
No?
I agree with you. I mean, I have been by there, visiting the new state reps office, have lunch there a couple of times, and Alderman Tempest, I'm telling you, it is unbelievable of how the customers are in their seat, engaging in conversation, and then literally someone says, "The parking meters," and they run out. This study that we did four, five years ago, Wayne, was for a specific, a specific situation, which is called COC, between Clayton, I think it's Clayton Street, and I forget the others, Madison. That was the only reason we did that study, and that freaking study has encompassed the entire downtown Waukegan. It has impacted the entire downtown Waukegan, and we've getting more complaints about a twenty-dollar ticket, an hour and a half time, where people are conducting business in downtown. This study that we did needs to be redone, and it needs to be redone with practical people who visited our downtown, who are down there, this just doesn't make sense. Greentown is being punished. The goal, the goal, I wanna get back to the goal, your honor. Of that study was to move cars by the courthouse. That was the very, to move the cars by the courthouse. It was never supposed to impact our restaurants. It was never supposed to impact the south of Washington Street or even north of Clayton. We're killing them folks down there. It is time that we take a look at this thing and do a comprehensive study where it encompasses the area that we wanna target, and for those who are down there doing what we want them to do, the Greentowns. I think the other restaurant, I forget the name of it, I'm a little excited, because you should see the customers just run out of there in suits and just, "I need, I need a quarter. Anybody got a quarter to put in the meter?" That is not the intent of our meters. That is not the intent. So it is time, this is the day that we need to address this. This is the day that we need to address this about these meters and how they're being managed. They need to be managed around the courthouse, not by our restaurants.
I have a question. Why do we have to have another study?
We don't.
Yeah, we just do it.
No, you just, all you have to do, all you have to do is change the ordinance and tell me how many minutes or how many hours you want on the meters, and I'll change it. Pretty simple.
Send that back to committee.
Yep.
It needs to go back to committee, so I would assume this would go back to the judiciary? Or is it public safety? Judiciary?
Judiciary.
Alderman Figueroa?
This did not come out of judiciary. This came out of finance, but the point is, I'm not trying to shirk it, this is for, wait a minute, this is for, for parking-paying machines.
This is for Metro.
This is for the parking-paying machines. Hey, let me, let me finish. This is for parking-paying machine, and I will say that that is an issue down there. We need to get this approved because those problems, those machines down there are a real problem. These accept debit cards and credit cards. We need to get this one approved, and I would like to do the same thing, if possible, do the study if we can do this, none of these are for the parking garage, right?
No, these are, this is strictly for the metro lines.
I know we have that problem in the parking garage. People are standing in line, they don't have the money to put into the meter, thinking that it will accept a debit card, and it doesn't. But anyway, these are for the, let's get these approved, get them out the door, and then talk about the other issues that we have in the building, in the parking building and throughout the downtown. I will say, I agree with Alderman Cunningham that we've got an issue downtown with the parking meters, but I do remember, I do recall that that parking study was all-inclusive, from the parking buildings to the downtown, around the courthouse, throughout the downtown. I remember that parking meter, I remember the issues that were, that came up, but it's, it needs to have a, maybe we can cooperate with Waukegan Main Street, they can earn some of their money, and talking to some of the business owners downtown, get us all together. We don't need to pay for another parking study. Let's, let's just do it. Talk this thing, let's resolve this thing amongst ourselves.
Okay, well, and that's, we can set that up. That's a simple, simple process to get it back to committee so that you can create an ordinance governing how much people pay and what the timeframe is on the meters, so, but before us would be this, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Tempest, I forgot, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. May I speak to the fifty thousand? It was proposed to us by Ms. Clerk Motley that he needed this motion done right away to coordinate all this. That's why we hurried it up. But in the meantime, I don't know what they pay for a parking space in Mundeline to get on the train, what they pay for parking space in Zion to get on the train, what they pay for parking space in Lake Bluff to get on the train, or Lake Forest to get on the plane, or Highwood and Highland Park to get on the train. I don't know what those fees are in those communities. I know your proposal was five dollars for all day.
For twenty-four hours.
Which made good sense to me, you know, it's over, but how does that compare, do we look at a study for other communities, what they're charging to park at their station?
North Chicago just raised their rates to forty dollars a month.
Wait a minute.
And they maintain forty, forty spaces. We maintain almost six hundred spaces.
Okay.
So we have to plow those spaces, we have to, we have to clean those spaces, we have to maintain those lots, we have to purchase machines, we have to pay people to maintain those machines. We, I mean, there's a lot of cost involved. When you're talking about over five hundred spaces.
My question is before you, is what do other communities charge for their parking at their train stations?
Most of them are about thirty dollars a month.
Thirty, now wait a minute, let's stop there a minute. Thirty dollars a month. Five dollars a day times five, five days in a week, that's twenty-five dollars, so that'd make mine a hundred dollars a month, right?
Well, sir, if you, we're trying to encourage people to buy the monthly parking pass, so they'll save.
Is there a pass?
There's a monthly pass.
And how much would that be?
The monthly pass is sixty, will be, it was thirty dollars a month, and it was thirty dollars a month for the last ten years. Before I took office, it cost a nickel an hour to park at the parking.
I'm asking, what is it now?
Now, right now, because the new ordinance passed, I think it's sixty.
Sixty?
Yes.
Okay. Now, with this pass we have, would they just put that pass in the garage thing?
No, the pass, the pass is mounted on the front windshield, left, lower left-hand front windshield of their car. It amounts, they park twenty, twenty-three to twenty-five days a month, so you break that down, divided by sixty, you're paying a little more than two dollars a day to park.
Okay, that's fair. So they're just gonna use it occasionally, it's five dollars?
It's five dollars for the day.
Okay.
That's more than fair.
That's fair. How, for the fifty thousand we're spending, how long it's gonna take us to get our money back?
I would say about six months.
Plus, this provides the ability to accept credit cards.
Yeah, it takes credit and debit cards, which we've never, we've never utilized.
And everybody, I think, has to remember that this.
We did discuss this last time. We wanted to get it on the motion so we could put it on the agenda today to discuss it. That's why I'm discussing.
Yeah, and you know what, Alderman, the hurry was because we wanna institute this as of May first, and we had to order the machines prior to, so this will actually, I've told all the monthly parking pass holders that we will not, and I did discuss this with the mayor, that we would not incorporate this change until May first.
Alderman Cunningham.
Wayne, question for you. Are there plans to, for the, are there plans for maintenance on the train station parking lot? Are you, is there a maintenance plan, I mean, to resurface or repave that? Because I, and I was driving through there a couple times, it was pretty bumpy, Wayne.
Well, we, we maintain the lots. Tom Haggerty built a new lot with a hundred and five spaces, so, Billy Johnson, I'm sorry, so many years ago, when there was a, when there was a real lack of parking availability. And we do maintain the lots. Union Pacific owns the lot. We pay Union Pacific a third of the income from the lots. They make, they make twelve hundred dollars a month per lot, plus a third of the income of that lot. So although we generate substantial dollars, we give a third of it back to Union Pacific. We're renegotiating that contract because the city is not getting a fair shake on that deal, as far as I'm concerned.
So from a maintenance standpoint, are we responsible to resurface and repave?
Yes, everything.
Okay, well then, I mean, doing, as we go through there, if you take a look at that, at the, you know, that parking lot, Wayne, it needs, it's bad.
Sam, I don't have the money.[1757.83] Sam, I, I don't have the money. I don't have the money to do that right now. Maybe with this change, we'll accrue some revenue, and we can account for that. Right now, we're trying to pay down the debt service on the machines, and just maintain the lots.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Well, we.
What would happen if we asked them to maintain the lot and take it over?
Well.
Would we lose it?
Yeah. I, I think, personally, I think, I talked to Ann Lynn, and I think it would be our best answer to negotiate that whole contract. It's a 20-year contract, we're in the 10th year, and we really, if you look at what we're paying for what we, what, what we give them and what we get in return, we're, we're being robbed.
Well, we'll get there. Okay. We have this before us that requires a roll call vote, please.
Do you need a motion?
Well, we had the original motion by Alderman Needham, was seconded by Alderman Tempest. Alderman Needham did ask to hold it over, but.
Make the motion.
Alderman, do we need a new motion then?
No.
Okay, we'll take the motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Larson. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. We have no communications before us today under new business and recommended actions by Corporation Council. Item A, approved payrolls dated, I don't have a date here. What, what date is this? It didn't make it on my.
Today.
Okay, so that says up to today, then. We have changed our bill paying and some other things around, so I just wanted to make sure on the date. Approved payroll dated 3/7/11 in the amount of $1,310,567.99. Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
There are no bills, Mayor.
We have no bills dated because of, again, because we're changing our, our payment sequencing.
To monthly.
Item 11 was done already. We moved that up the agenda, so we have Alderman's time. Following that, we will go into probably about a half an hour executive session. Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Moizio.
Pass.
Alderman Figueroa.
Pass.
Alderman Newsom.
Pass.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
I got a couple of things to say. First and foremost, I want to wish my four-year-old granddaughter a happy birthday. Maddie joined this world a little early, four years ago, and it was touch and go for a while, but she's a, I have to say, she's a wonderful little girl, and she loves her Grandma and Grandpa 100, when you ask her. So, God bless Maddie, and my son and daughter are doing, daughter-in-law are doing a great job. So, a shout-out to the granddaughter. She makes my heart sing. This Friday, Waukegan Main Street, and Violet was here earlier, has the Art Walk. It's a great event. It's from 5 to 9, features artwork, a chance to meet your local representative, Rita Mayfield. There's live jazz at Joplin's Java. And it's a, you know, you can throw a little money at Waukegan Main Street and join Waukegan Main Street, the absolute most vital organization we've got going in, in Waukegan these days. They do great work, and I'm not just saying that because I'm on the board. But please come and enjoy our beautiful downtown, meet some great people, join Waukegan Main Street, support the car show redevelopment, right down the line. You'll have a great time. So if you're not there, I'm going to know. But I wanted to address Mike Donahue to, and keep it clean, I will. You know, Mike's one of those guys that when you wanted to talk about what's going on, he'd give you an honest evaluation. He was always respectful to not only me, but the rest of the Aldermen and staff. You can't make too much of that kind of guy. I mean, it's, you know, if a school teacher had an issue with a parking problem in, at 7:30 in the morning, he'd come over to the school and check it out. And if there was a particular, you know, person or persons who was making things life difficult for the parking attendants at a school, he would help. So, God bless Mike. He did his duty, did it well, and always has, and, you know, he's going to have to buy me a beer, because I said all those nice things about him. But that's all. Thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Yeah, I'd like to say something about Mike, too. Officer Donahue is, he's an awesome man. We've known him for, for quite a while. I know he enjoys Puerto Rican food, especially when he stops through the Puerto Rican Society. He's always, he's a great guy. And I also want to bless not only him, but the, the entire police department and the fire department. It just shows what risks they take to protect our people in this community. So, God bless you all, and keep up the great work. And I also want to, you know, thank, I'm glad I see a lot of my constituents that are making to these meetings, and given their insight on what's going on, I really appreciate it very much, because I feel, you know, they're, they're really coming out, and they want to know what's going on in this community. But Brother Blanks, you brought up some great points, and also Mrs. Schrank, again, she brought up some great points. And you're right, with the state legislation, coming up with new legislation on these gun laws, I think it would be wiser for us to, to hear what they have to say, and then go from there and implement how we're going to do this ordinance. So, again, thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
Yeah, two, two, two quick things. One, you know, recently, the library made some, some cuts to their budget that caused, you know, I think, a huge outcry in the community. One of the things that really concerned me, Your Honor, is that even though they are an extension of the city from a budgetary, budgetary standpoint, I think Alderman Tempest has said this in the past, that that library makes a lot of independent decisions without any, not, without even consulting or even conferring with the council. I don't know if they confer with you, but it would have been nice to have known that those things are coming down the pike, as opposed to seeing them in the new sun the very next morning. Their budget, and I guess there's a, an understanding that, do we approve their budget, we don't approve their budget, do we watch over their budget, oversee their budget? Well, the fact is, they're an extension of this city, period. Without the city, there is no public library. Obviously, without the public library, there is no way the city services can go on, so. And, and I also saw the, the comments of the executive director of the public library making what we should or should not have done, and things like that. It would have been, it would have been great to have the city fathers, and I shouldn't call us fathers, but the city leaders, to know that these type of actions of being, are going to be coming down, and then we're all in this little thing together, as we do up here. It was disheartening to see, front page, I don't know, Mayor Ginn, if you knew about it, but I know I didn't. I, I can't speak for the other Aldermen, but it appears that we did not know. That is an extension of the city of Waukegan. When the constituents come to us, they expect us to know their answers to these things. So, as he is brave enough to give his opinion as to what we should and should not be doing on the city level, he should be brave enough to come over here and speak to us when he's going to render decisions going to ultimately affect the service and the outcome of this So that's, that's, that's the first comment. The second is, you know, the, the gun thing. The, the gun thing is, is, is a subject that is very sore, particularly in low-income areas. It's a, it's a debate that will go on and on and on, whether who's right or who's wrong. The fact is, guns and lower income, particularly African-American, Latino communities, they are used more times to harm young people at a rate of three to four to one. So that must be an alarm that we must set to say, "Something is wrong". And when we identify process improvements, then we must take them and say, "What can, what can come out of this so everybody is happy?". You know what I found out? Sometimes everybody isn't happy. Meeting in the middle is probably the best thing. So, I commend Mr. Blanks and his team for what they've been able to do to bring this to our attention. This goal is not to damage or decrease the sale of, you know, the guns or anything, but I truly believe, in witnessing what I have been able to witness, not just in Waukegan, but throughout this country, that responsible people must be the ones who have these handguns, because those are the things that are killing young men and young women, particularly those of African-American, Latino, and we must speak about it. If there's failure, then there's failure. You, you talk about it, you come up with resolutions about it, and then you move on. But I'm going, I'm, I'm pretty fortunate. I have my, my colleague in the second ward, who's very familiar with, with guns and how they're to be used and everything, and what responsible, I repeat the word, responsible people do to own these. Because I do not want, as much as we praise him, and we thank him for his bravery, but I do not want another officer, another young man, another young woman, another little girl, a little boy, to be incarnate with an individual who's irresponsible with handling a handgun. And God forbid, if he or she has received that handgun without the necessary process in place to protect not only him, but this coun, but this city. Thank you.
Alderman Conkin.
Yeah, I'll make my comment regarding the gun issue also. I understand the situation from both sides. My issue with changing this ordinance is the fact that if we're going to change it, we should do it where it's going to be effective. I don't believe that making any business hang on to a piece of property for 30 days is going to guarantee that it's not going to happen again. So if we're going to make a change, it should be an effective change, as Alderman Cunningham stated. It's got to be effective. I don't believe that what we've asked, the change in the ordinance is going to be effective at all. So that's why I wanted to have a meeting with them. I'd like to meet with Joan Schrank, and with the Shooting Association, and with Chief Greathouse, and we can all get together and talk. So if we're going to do something to make a change, let's make it effective, because this isn't a common occurrence, and I don't think we should make a knee-jerk response just to make a feel-good effort at changing an ordinance when it won't do any good. And with, as for the second thing, since nobody mentioned it, the fire department and the police department are going to play this Saturday at 6 o'clock, the main gym at the Dog Pound over at East Campus, for the 10th Annual Juarez Cup. I believe the police department owns the cup right now, and have for a couple of years. Well, they'll be playing, they'll be playing again Friday night. Tickets are $3, and it proceeds benefit the Booster Club for the high school and for the special recreation services in Northern Lake County. So, if you've got nothing to do Saturday night, run down to the Dog Pound and watch the policeman play the fireman.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, we will take a motion to go into executive session for pending and imminent litigation, settlement of claims, real estate sale negotiations. Alderman Moizio, and seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Figueroa.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Take a five.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute break and then go in. Ladies and gentlemen, that, for all intents and purposes, concludes our meeting this evening. We will come back out of executive session, go into regular session, and then we will come out, and that'll be it for the evening.[1772.13]